A new face tonight. Commissioner Rodriguez, hello.
Hello, I'm very excited to, you know, have this opportunity as an alternate commissioner. I have always been a person politically and in a very, you know, good sense, I believe that, you know, I believe the community, you know, should be, you know, first, you know, and I believe, you know, a lot of people need a lot of help in our community in different, in different ways. And like definitely, like I'm thinking of, you know, learning more and, you know, being able to help folks. It's, it's my mission, my, my definite goal.
That's good to hear. So I think it's seven o'clock. Robert, should we get started or should we wait a couple of more minutes? Then we have a call, right?
I would say you have a quorum. So if you'd like to get started, you may.
Okay, I think let's go and get started, everyone. So I'll be the hosting the meeting tonight as the Chair Leon is unavailable to join. So, welcome everyone. Let's start it with the thing. So, Community Advisory Commission Meeting is held via teleconference Zoom only, no physical meeting space. You may watch the meeting without providing the public comment by accessing it via links below, like either with the Facebook, YouTube or web streaming. For public comment instructions, oral public comments may be provided live during the Community Advisory Commission Meeting by first registering for the Zoom meeting in advance by providing email address not disclosed and a name. And there's a link provided in the agenda for the registration. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the meeting. A link will be sent to you to join Community Advisory Commission Meeting in order to give your comments. All registered meetings attendees who wish to speak must click on the raise hand icon when the Chair calls for the public comments. If participating by calling in or on your phone dial star nine to use the raise hand feature. And when you are called upon, hit star six to unmute your phone. Your phone number will be displayed in the live meeting. The Chair or staff will call the speakers to begin. All comments provided shall be limited to three minutes or less as determined by the Chair. Or all members of the public will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. The online written comment from previously used is no longer available for public comment. Okay, so it's seven or two P M. And I'll just call the meeting to the call to the order. And I'll just start with the pledge of allegiance.
Vice Chair, if I may just interject real quick, if we can just do a quick announcement. I just wanted to introduce two new commissioners to the commission. We have a new full-time Commissioner Peralta and a alternate Commissioner Rodriguez joining us tonight for the first time as fully commissioned by the mayor on June twenty first at the City Council meeting. So, welcome both of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So let's start with the, Robert, let's go with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so I'll just start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll start with the roll call. So I know Commissioner Leon, the Chair is not present, so Vice Chair Vishal, I'm present. I'll go with the next Commissioner Jose Rosario.
President.
Okay, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Thelma Battalio.
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Van Langtrong.
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Iling Zong.
Present.
Okay, and then Commissioner. Okay, it on the, I think we have on the now on the alternates, right, Robert? I think those are the ones.
Jinky Peralta.
Yeah, oh yeah, Commissioner Jinky Peralta.
Present.
Okay, and now I'll go to the alternates, Commissioner Kavita Sridhar. Okay, Commissioner Gilroy Casanova. Okay, Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Monica Rodriguez.
Present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that covers all the list, right, Robert and Sharon?
Yes, Chair, so I believe we have, I'm trying to count here using the screen, so give me one second.
Sure.
We have six, so you have the ability to seat an alternate.
Okay, so Commissioner Monica Rodriguez, you will be the sitting Commissioner.
Okay.
For today's meeting.
Wonderful. I appreciate it.
Invite here, sorry, Sharon, I would just want to clarify that because you had called Commissioner Casanova's name. He had resigned and that's why Commissioner Rodriguez was appointed to the alternate.
Okay, got it. Okay, thanks, Sharon. Okay, let's go, I think we just got the sitting of the alternates done. So I will just go with the approval of the agenda. Is everybody in favor of the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I'll just go again with the list since we got two. So I think Commissioner Thelma said yes, and then second was by Commissioner Rosario.
Vice Chair, if I may, if, can we have somebody say I make a motion and second?
Sure. Okay.
I believe I have.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Rodriguez, if you could just say I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to make, to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take, take on the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rosario. I'll just go with everyone's vote, so about Commissioner Thelma.
I approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Langtrong.
Yes, I approve the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Iling Zong.
Yes.
Okay, Comish- N- Nahram. Let me, oh, Jinky Peralta, Commissioner.
Yes, I approve that agenda.
Okay, and this is Vice Chair, I also approve it. Did I get all, did we call all yeas? I think there's no need, right?
I didn't hear Commissioner Zong, but perhaps you said her name.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, next is item number six, approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting, which was held on June second twenty twenty one. Anybody would like to make a motion to approve it?
I approve it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Battalio. Okay, anybody for second?
I second.
Okay. And that was Commissioner.
Can you, yeah, can you kindly announce your name before you say your, your state?
Okay. I think I'll just go with the votes again. So.
If I may, forgive me for interrupting. The minutes should probably be approved by members who were in attendance at the last meeting.
Okay, so Commissioner Leon is not present today. Commissioner Thelma, but she just did it. Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Iling Zong.
Yes.
Thank you, and Kavita Sridhar, I think Commissioner Kavita Sridhar is not present, right, so. Is that good, Robert?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on.
I'm sorry. Can I get a clarification? I think what Robert was trying to clarify was that the two new commissioners, because they weren't present last time, typically they would not be voting on the minutes. So I wasn't sure I got everybody.
So as per the minutes notes, Sharon, I see Commissioner Chair Oscar Leon, Commissioner Thelma, Commissioner Rosario, Commissioner Iling and Commissioner Kavita Sridhar were only present in the last meeting.
Forgive me, Vice Chair, and forgive me, Sharon, I, I was under the, I, I thought I heard Commissioner Batilo and Rosario approve the minutes. Did I hear that incorrectly?
No, they did.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, create the motion, Vice Chair. The motion to, needs to be.
So I'll create a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting held on June second, two thousand twenty one.
This is Commissioner Batilo, I second that motion.
Thank you. Okay.
Vice Chair trying to call for the vote.
Okay, let's call for the vote again. So Commissioner Chair Oscar Leon is not present. Commissioner Thelma Battalio just did the motion. Commissioner Jose Rosario.
Yes, I approve, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Iling Zong.
Yes.
Okay, and then Commissioner Kavita Sridhar, she's not present today. So. Okay, let's move to number seven, public forum items. Interested public members may provide comments to the commission on any subject not on the agenda via Zoom, same instruction above. Commenters may state their name and address for the record and shall limit their remark to three minutes or less as determined by the Chair. As an un-agenda item, no response is required of the commission or city staff. However, the commission may request staff to agendize the item for a future meeting. Do we have anybody for public comments, Robert?
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll move on to number, item number eight, which is the announcements. Robert or Sharon, any announcements?
And no, we made the announcements just after a roll call, so thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, sure, thank you. Okay, let's moving on to the item number nine, which is the business items. So we had the first item is the National Night Out. And in absence of Commissioner Leon, I believe we have a representative from the Milpitas Police who is going to be giving us the report. I think it's a.
I want to introduce Sergeant Speckin here one more time. He came to the commission, I believe in June, to inform you all of National Night Out. And he's here to provide an update about last night's event. So, welcome Sergeant Speckin here.
Thank you, Robert. Shall I begin now or? All right, so just to kind of recap, I can kind of go over the generalization in terms of what we, the evening incurred. So essentially, we had, originally when we planned this, we started planning back in about June. When we had started contacting all the different neighborhood watch groups. We had initially about forty-four to forty-five different parties that were set throughout the city. As we got closer and closer to date, several of the parties had canceled. So we had finished with a total of thirty-seven parties that were conducted last night. An interesting fact is I, when I was talking with some of the representatives who were there, there were seventy-five parties within a three-city area and thirty-seven of the seventy-five parties were all in Milpitas. So we had a really good turnout, which was wonderful to see, especially in today's times. Of those thirty-seven parties, we had about eleven different officer groups. So usually two officers or whether detective or citizen, assistant volunteers or a C S O or community service officer. And they would go out in pairs and then be visiting on average about four different parties, trying to spend at least half hour to forty-five minutes at each party in order to try and make sure to be available, to speak with the guests and just kind of be available to answer questions as best as possible. Of all the parties that we had, of thirty-seven parties, we had a total estimate of about eleven hundred and nine attendees, which was amazing, especially in today's day and time. So we were really, really happy with that turnout. And we, everything seemed, everyone, everyone that I, all the parties that I went to, everyone seemed to have a good time. There was definitely a lot of questions were being answered and a lot of the people were allowed, getting the opportunity to try and ask questions and just trying to engage and do things. It was a really great time. Are there any specific questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Sergeant, for the report. I think it was well, very well organized. I attended one of the neighborhood party on the Acadia and there were good turnaround of people as well as the city staff showed up there. So it was a good party, I think would get together.
Very nice. And Vice Chair, also I wanted to make sure that we allowed Sharon Goe, our Director of Building Safety and Housing. She attended Chair Leon's National Night Out event last night, so she's going to provide a little update from that as well.
Okay, sure, Sharon.
Thank you, Robert, thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, so Chair Leon wanted me to share this with the team here. And so it was lower turnout than prior years because of the pandemic, but it was still good, you know, it was a good opportunity for the neighbors to get together. And there was a police department representative there, like Jason mentioned, and fire department and city manager's office there as well. So, you know, I think yeah, especially during these challenging times, you know, it was a good, you know, event that kind of brought people together. So that's update he wanted me to share with the commission here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. For providing the update. So let's move on to the number B, Neighborhood Beautification.
I just want to make sure we gave the commission an opportunity if anybody wanted to make a comment about their own national night experience. And Councilmember Chua has her hand raised, just, just as an F Y I.
Okay, sure, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to thank, of course, everybody. It was really fun. I had a good time and I think everybody else did. I saw Sergeant Jason a couple of times, I think two or three times.
Three times.
Three times? Yes, so we, the mayor, Vice Mayor and myself, we, we tried, our goal was to go to twelve sites. And that's very aggressive considering we started around four-thirty-ish. And, and we were able to go to at least nine because two canceled. And the other one, unfortunately, we couldn't find, so. So, so we apologize to the residents, but it was awesome. The, the people are ready to mingle. We, we observed the, I wore, I wore a mask and I always do. And everybody just told me, they sent me pictures, lots of pictures today, all day, so. So I'm hoping everybody can participate next year. And I'm, and I think Sergeant Jason will still be there, right?
Yes, I will.
And also Congressman Rokana showed up at the, at the McQuire's Park. So we have a special guest. Thank you, Chair, and that's it.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner, Councilmember Chua.
Vice Chair, I wasn't sure, you know, this is now my Commissioner Batilo here. I wasn't sure where the list was, but, but the good news is at least I went to one because I know that, that one always invites me specifically. But I was supposed to go to a couple of them, but I wasn't sure if they were on, so I stayed in one. And we also had, of course, the presentation of the police and there were a lot of, well, there was one at least new resident. And she was excited about that, that the Milpitas feel of a community family and welcoming her being new in the neighborhood. I wasn't sure if the others had gone to any, if also especially for the new, new ones, for new commissioners. And if there's any questions about it, so we could prepare it. And if they don't have any in their neighborhood, that certainly we can start, you know, working on it to see if we could do it in their area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Batilo. I think that's a good suggestion, so. I'll just give an opportunity to all the new commissioners who have joined.
Yeah, definitely, I'd definitely be interested in joining. I mean, I would, I didn't have a chance to go, but I mean, I would definitely like to, you know, be more involved.
Yeah, so see, as a history, I think this is the first time we had it on Tuesday, first Tuesday of August. Yeah, Neighborhood Night Out has always been in the national level. All the communities in the U S have it on Tuesday, first Tuesday. Before that, our City Council meets on first and third Tuesday, so.
We lose Commissioner Batilo?
Yeah, I believe she dropped. Vice Chair, just to alert you, Commissioner has her hand raised.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch the name, which Commissioner?
Commissioner Peralta.
Oh, Commissioner Peralta, yeah, go ahead, I think.
Yes, I was able to attend the National Night Out last night. It was my first time and it was a good turnout. We were able to go to all nine, I believe, we went to nine because there was to that cancel. And I had fun, it was a blast, so being the first time on attending, so was great. Hopefully, we can do it again next year.
Okay, that's great to hear, Commissioner Peralta. Okay, Commissioner Zong, I see you have raised your hands, so next.
Hi, so I know that some of the events were canceled and mine, the one closest to me unfortunately was also canceled. Do we know if those are going to be rescheduled anytime soon or is it just canceled for the year and then next year will be when it comes back?
I believe those are the canceled for the year, but Robert or Sergeant can help us. But I believe they're just canceled for the year now.
Yeah, we haven't received any update from anyone that has canceled a party. A lot of the times, the reasons people are canceling is a lot of it had to do with just uncomfortable with the current situation with COVID and those types of things. So it wasn't because of other conflicting schedules. The, when we spoke to the residents who were going to be hosting, but then decided not to host is usually because of the, just the COVID concerns. And so, and again, this is, this is an event for the, for the citizens. And we are the guests of the, as the department and we just want to make sure that we're available. So if they don't feel comfortable with it, obviously, we don't want to push or pressure anyone in a situation that they don't feel comfortable with.
Got it, thank you.
Any other commissioners would like to speak?
Well, like I mentioned, I, I didn't have a chance to go yesterday to the, you know, to the event, but I'm definitely, you know, going to be going and trying to attend, you know, next year.
Yep.
It seems like a lot of fun, you know, it seems like something, you know, you know, it's a way of interacting with our, with our community. I definitely support it.
That's good to hear, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I'm just going to be one more minute.
If I may say something?
Sure.
So in the future, if you're looking to get involved, or if you, whether you want to host or not, a lot of our contacts for this usually come through our Neighborhood Watch program. So if you have a Neighborhood Watch in your, or if you want to inquire about a Neighborhood Watch in your area, please feel, give us a call and try and contact one of us at P C R. If you call a general number to the police department and then ask to speak with someone in the P C R, either myself or the Officer Mustafa Assefi or Officer John Mock, we can assist and see if we can locate one in your neighborhood. Or if there isn't and you feel like you want to kind of spearhead the challenge of, of being the contact for a Neighborhood Watch in your area, we'd be more than happy to kind of help walk you through it and what, what that entails. But a lot of our contacts in terms of who we reach out to for these incidents usually stem from Neighborhood Watch. Every once in a while, we'll get someone who will maybe call up and ask to host one just in their neighborhood and let us know that they're going to be hosting and we'll add them to the list when the time comes. I know this year on our social media, we wanted to make sure to obviously put it out as soon as we could, but because of all the cancellations and a lot of kind of the uncertainty on some of the neighborhoods, we did eventually publish the list of the locations, just like the block numbers without giving away people's personal information. But we wanted to at least publish those, that information so that those that if they are signed or following us on social media, they can actually see if there's one in their neighborhood that they can go visit because it is open to all. So in the future, if there isn't one in your neighborhood, you could always just keep an eye on social media around the time when National Night Out does come back around next year. And then you can look to see if there's one in your neighborhood, one that you want to visit just by following us on social media.
Thank you so much for the information, definitely. I'll definitely be looking into it. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant.
No problem.
Sure. Let's move to item number B, Neighborhood Beautification. Staff will provide an update to C A C on the status of Neighborhood Beautification Award Work Plan Item.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. So Neighborhood Beautification is, this is an item that I'm sure you're all aware of that the C A C puts on every year. However, due to the pandemic, the C A C was unable to provide the community any awards last year. Unfortunately, due to a variety of reasons, which I'll get to in a second, it appears that staff must defer this item again until next year. The first reason predominantly is the pandemic. I'm sure you're all aware of the numbers continue to suggest that we've regressed from an infection standpoint. So for everyone's safety, we feel it would be best to defer this item to next year. But also California is in a serious drought and perhaps the notion of beautifying your property would lead to higher than normal water usage, which, which we just simply can't afford. So for these two reasons, staff is going to defer this item until next year. And we will request that you pivot your attention to other initiatives that we could certainly use your attention and assistance on, one of which will be our next agenda item. But before we go there, I'd like to bring it back to the Vice Chair and for any comments and for the commission for any comments and feedback.
Okay, so I don't have any comments at the moment, so I'll just open it for the forum. Anybody have any comments, any commissioners? Okay. Let's move to item number C. Let's talk housing center. Clara County staff will provide a presentation on an upcoming housing element, community outreach event.
Yes, so we have our housing manager, Adam Marcus, with us today to present an item for you, just to get a plug and presentation, and then I will turn it over to him for the presentation.
Thank you, Robert.
Commissioners, Councilmember Adam Marcus with the housing team. And Robert, to me, plan up, we have a few slides. I won't go too long. Mostly I'd like to see if you have questions once I'm done and shouldn't take too long, so.
All right, please let me know when you can see it full screen.
Not yet. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, let me just shift my screen so I can see my notes as well and then I'll get started. Okay, well, here we go. So as you know, the Bay Area has quite a housing shortage and it affects all of us. It affects our friends, our families, our coworkers, and it affects us all in different ways. This year is a special year for a number of reasons. And one of the reasons is that we're getting ready to update our housing element. In all the cities across the Bay Area and across Santa Clara County are all doing the same thing. They're all updating their housing plans as well. And we're going to need a lot of community input on this process and it's about a year and a half. So we're just getting started. I'm going to talk for a few minutes tonight about kind of what the housing element is, why it's especially important this year, maybe more important than ever. And I'm going to need your help with something, you know, I'll mention, I'll explain what I mean in a minute, next slide. So that, as I mentioned, the housing element, it's a housing plan for the city of Milpitas. It's a chapter in our general plan. As some of you know, we just recently updated our general plan. But the housing element is special in that we have to update it every eight years. And so we are due to update it for the next period, which is twenty twenty-three.
for the next period, which is twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Um it's a big, large, hundred-page document. There's uh it looks at demographic needs, planning needs, economic analysis. Um it does require very broad and meaningful community outreach, and it is required by the state. It's not optional. Next slide. So really quickly, I just wanted to run through. So what are the what goes into a housing element? What questions does a housing element have to answer? Um and this is a standard thing. The state has um there's certain state laws that say exactly what you need to include in your housing element. So there are some minimum requirements. So let's let's take a look. So first of all, uh the housing element is going to look at what are the housing needs for people of all income levels in Milpitas? All income levels, so very low, low, moderate and above moderate income. Um there's all sorts of housing needs in Milpitas. Next slide. The element uh will also look at how we can address disparities in access to opportunities, so access to high-performing schools, access to transit, access to jobs, access to parks and libraries and other things that um that are sources of opportunity, whether you're young, whether you're middle-aged or whether you're a senior. Um and also looking at segregated housing patterns, which uh you know, is is prevalent throughout our our state and our country. Um and also looking at preventing displacement from Milpitas. And there are people in Milpitas who are really want to stay in Milpitas, but aren't sure if they if they can continue to live here because of rising housing costs. Uh next slide. Uh the housing element also looks at what programs and policies has a city already been working on. How are they going? Are they working well? Can they be adjusted? Are they not working? Do we need different or new programs in addition to the ones? Um and of course, you know, what's uh what are the resources that are needed to do that? Um so next slide. Again, I mentioned uh new housing programs that might be needed. Next slide. Um and again, uh we have a severe housing shortage throughout California, throughout the Bay Area. Um and it it is difficult for a number of reasons to build housing. Um so what are some ways that Milpitas and other cities within the Bay Area and the state of California, how can we lower the barriers to building really good quality housing? Next slide. Uh and of course, where do we put the new housing? So I'll mention, I'll explain in a minute. But we've been assigned a goal of building almost sixty-seven hundred new units of housing. That's both affordable and market rate housing over the next eight years. So where does that housing go? So next slide, please. And so this is a a quick comparison of uh you see twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Um in the prior um housing element cycle, which is the one we're currently kind of finishing up right now. Um our 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 housing goal or our regional housing needs allocation, which is just another way of saying our housing goal, it's been assigned to us by um the associations and Bay Area governments um was, you know, almost thirty-three hundred units. And you can see that our new arena, our new housing goal is almost double or or beyond double that. So it's quite a bit more housing um that not just Milpitas, but all cities and counties in the Bay Area and throughout California. Because of certain state law changes, all cities are being asked to plan for uh more housing than they have in the past. Um and so um that's one of the key reasons why this year is more important than ever to be involved in the housing element planning because um it it's a it's a it's a um it's an important topic, but it's not an easy topic. Um finding a place to put um, you know, more housing and also thinking about the different types of housing that are needed, whether it's market rate housing, moderate income housing or affordable housing. Um and yeah, so on the next slide, we'll uh we'll continue to talk a little bit about this. This is a uh picture of Milpitas uh of our general plan. This is a land use map. So the yellow areas are single-family neighborhoods. Uh the purple areas are commercial kind of shopping center areas. Um and then you can see kind of in the lower left uh the kind of blue, purply, light purple, that's um our our South Main Street gateway specific plan area and then the the sort of light brown in the bottom corner where where the Bart Station is. That's our metro specific plan area. Thanks, Robert, for for putting the mouse there. Um so again, these are all, you know, uh different parts of the city. Um and so again, we have to figure out where we can put sixty-seven hundred units of housing, I should say, planned for it. Where can we plan for that amount of housing? Where does it make sense to put it? And and that can be many different types of housing. It can be anything from an A D U uh to townhomes, to uh larger, taller, more dense buildings, you know, near the Bart Station. Um so many different types of housing that that all get us towards reaching that goal. Um and while the city does not build housing, um the state does require us to update our housing element and make sure that it's at least possible uh to build enough housing to to meet these goals. Um the city is hiring a consultant to help us analyze parcel by parcel where it's likely that new housing could go in the next eight years. Next slide. And this is just a quick timeline to show you, over the next roughly year and a half, we'll be working on the housing element. So this is just the beginning. Um and we're going to start off with the Let's Talk Housing Santa Clara County event, which I'm going to talk about in just a second. Um so you can see that red bar is the housing element schedule. Um we have been working on it a little behind the scenes and we're going to start um having more public meetings here in the fall. Um probably virtually because we still can't really do uh in person, even though that's usually the best way to to get input, but I think we've all kind of um gotten used to Zoom, so we'll be continuing with that. And then there's a few other related projects, the Assessment of Fair Housing, which we'll also be working on and having some discussions about. And the the Planning Department is also um working on two updates to the specific plans, the the metro and the gateway specific plans. Um which are very much related to, you know, where we're going to put housing in the coming eight years. So even though there's separate plans, um they're very much uh part of the discussion on on the housing element. Next slide. And this is our last slide, I promise. And then uh then we'll have time for questions if you have any. Um so Santa Clara Cities are working together with a consultant to host a series of four virtual meetings in August, and that's called, it's a series called Let's Talk Housing, Santa Clara County. These events will virtually bring together a wide range of people from Santa Clara County communities to begin an important discussion on how to address the regional and local housing shortage over the next eight years. The more people that we hear from, the better our plans for the future of housing will reflect what is actually needed in each city. Uh your voice, along with the voices of your neighbors, um our workforce, our young people, um all the people that that are affected by housing uh will be critical to ensure that we have housing that meets everyone's needs. This is an introductory meeting and it's meant for everyone, including people who are just learning about this for the first time. So meeting number four will focus on Milpitas as well as Mountain View, Santa Clara and Sunnyvale. And it will be held on August thirtieth. Please mark your calendars. August thirtieth at six P M. Um the first part of the meeting will be more general and the second part of the meeting will be just for Milpitas, just Milpitas residents and stakeholders. Not Sunnyvale, not Santa Clara, you know, Santa Clara, Mountain View. So that second part of the meeting is really where you will have a chance to both listen and and share uh your thoughts on on housing. We have a a few fun kind of discussion questions that will will help with that. Um we also created a great webpage um that helps educate folks who are just learning about this housing plan and the process. Um it's it was put together by the consultant and it's really nice. Um so please definitely take a look at it. The the link is on the screen. It's um pretty easy to remember. It's Let's Talk Housing S C C as in Santa Clara County dot org. Um and it's just, you know, probably takes about fifteen, twenty minutes to kind of page through, but it does include a little bit about Housing One O One, um why the housing element matters, how the housing element process works and how you can get involved. Um so with that, I'd like to ask for your help to get the word out so that as many people as possible can be aware of and hopefully attend this kickoff meeting um in at the end of August. We will be sharing some flyers so that you can um share that with your neighbors and your friends and colleagues and coworkers. Um and if you're on social media, we very much appreciate if you can help us um by reposting you our um our office, our uh City Manager's Office will likely be posting some things in the coming weeks. So if if you're on social media and you feel like you're uh okay with sharing uh with your networks, please do um any way that you can get the word out, because the more people we can get involved uh early on, I think people can understand the process and understand how and when they can continue to be involved um as we get towards that January deadline for our our housing plan. So uh with that, um I can pause here for, well, I'm done, so I'm happy to answer any questions uh that you may have. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Tom, Adam Marcus. Uh so I'd like, I'll probably there are one question on this. I think the presentation was good enough and all. But along with this many houses, have we looked into it? How are we gonna add more infrastructure, things like schools, hospitals, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, that's a that's a great question, and we will be meeting with the school district to talk to them about their their needs and their concerns. Um it it's absolutely um important that as we grow, that um that our 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 various institutions grow with us. Um and so that's, you know, we've already been in touch with with the superintendent and and we'll be meeting in the next few weeks with them as sort of a kickoff meeting as well. Um and yes, in terms of um infrastructure, um that is part of the analysis and we we do have to be able to show um that new housing, uh we have to show where that housing can really realistically go. And that includes infrastructure and access to um, you know, everything that's needed to build the housing.
Okay, that's good to hear. I'll just open it up for the forum here. So if any commissioners have any questions for Adam?
I wanted to um to mention something. Um you know, I I know that, you know, especially our county, so Santa Clara County, a lot of a lot of people in our community, they they're um so some of them are low income, you know, they have to work two jobs or three jobs in order to make a living. I think affordable housing, in my in my opinion, is is much needed, much, much needed. I mean, because it it's like, you know, you you were mentioning, I mean, like a lot of people, you know, they they want to stay in Milpitas. They don't want to, you know, go away. But sometimes um that they can't afford it. So I mean, I think, you know, like I mentioned, affordable housing, you know, is very beneficial, very much.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, the slide I showed, it didn't really show how we done on our last cycle, but we do have, we have reported that earlier in the year and you know, we've done very well in building market rate housing in Milpitas. Uh we've gone beyond our goals. Uh but what's really difficult is is finding enough subsidy to make the affordable housing happen. And that's something that we can't do alone. We need the state and federal uh programs to really help developers uh sort of fill the gap between what people can afford to pay and what it costs to actually uh build and run these buildings.
Definitely, yeah. But well, thank you so much for the information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to alert you that Commissioner Zhong has her hand raised.
Sure, yes. Commissioner Zhong?
Thank you. Um and thank you, Adam, for your presentation. Um you're doing amazing work and obviously super critical uh with everything that's going on. Um very difficult task. Um uh but with that being said, I I mean, of course, we're all um aware of the housing crisis that we're in. Um and these meetings are obviously really important. I was just wondering, since we are trying to reach out to as many residents as possible to get their input beyond just having these virtual meetings, will some kind of survey or questionnaire type thing be sent to all of the residents or like be available online um for residents to be able to provide their input?
That's that's a great idea, Commissioner. And um and I I forgot to mention, you know, any not just help us get the word out, but any ideas that you have that um and that's partly what they will cover at this meeting, but um we're we are very much open to your suggestions on how to reach the community. Um especially in these times where we can't do it's hard for us to have in-person meetings and to come to people's events and present at their events. So and do pop-ups and things that maybe we would do if we could. So I I you know, we, as soon as we get our consultant on board, we will have a more uh we'll have that more solid in terms of what exactly we'll be doing, but I think an online survey is definitely doable and makes a lot of sense for those folks who um you know, who either can't make the meetings or, you know, it's just another way to get the information. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Adam and Commissioner Zhong. Okay, anybody, any other commissioners would like to uh ask or provide their feedback?
Uh yeah, I I just have a question, uh uh Adam. I think out from uh all of the four four time, we should at least provide one meeting in person. Because uh the minority community, you know, ethnic community and also the elderly. Um even after all these time, you know, the most of them still not connected to Zoom or any online meeting. So I that will be one concern that I I have. So so I think we would just make every effort to provide at least one. Your meeting.
Commissioner, can I ask, what what would what do those meetings look like? What do you guys think would be the best way to host one of those meetings? And would it? I mean, of course, you know, there's, you know, you could have it at a city facility, but is there a place or a like, do you think it'd be better to do small, something smaller versus larger? Or are there places where people are already gathering that perhaps city staff, if we had the right, you know, we could figure out all the COVID stuff that we could go to where they're already gathering. Uh it's hard for us to know sometimes whether people are getting together or not because of COVID, as as we heard earlier. Some people weren't even, you know, comfortable to have kind of block parties, but do you know if there's already gatherings happening or?
Um I I I could check with uh uh uh, you know, one or two uh church on the Buddhist temple uh in the community that I know and and, you know, uh try to uh talk to the pastor of the uh uh you 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 know, the bridge i- in in the church to find out if they have a certain uh meeting, you know, gathering. Uh I'm sure it was going on, you know, last year even. So so I'm sure that uh they still provide some gathering, but I will have to check for you. And I think this is um, we're talking about August, right? Um uh
Well, it's just starting. So August is just the beginning. Um we would like to do more meetings.
So so what the timeline then? Is it from August to the end of the year or August to September, October, something? I'm really hoping that uh you know, vaccine will increase.
Yeah.
And uh uh you know, the Delta variant will somehow be under control. I I mean, I'm really hoping.
Yeah.
Uh but it's all depend of so many unknown uh situation, right?
Yeah.
But but just because housing is so important of the issue. So I I think the more effort we try, the better.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And uh we're, as much as we want to have those in-person meetings, we're not going to wait too much longer to start the the discussion. Um because we we do have a deadline and we don't want this to be short. We don't want to um you know.
Drag it out, yeah.
No, 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 I mean, let let me rephrase it. We want to make sure that we have plenty of input and time to get input from the community, both in the beginning and towards the end, once we have a draft. So if we wait too long, then, you know, it it's not as it's the the feedback we get isn't as good. It's it's not as complete. So it's I think we're going to do the best we can with with Zoom in the beginning and with I think we're gonna do the best we can with with Zoom in the beginning and with maybe surveys or something. Um, and then if uh, in early twenty twenty-one, sorry, twenty-two, um, things open up a little more, um, you know, we're, we'll be ready, you know, we'll be ready to have those in-person meetings as soon as soon as we can. So I I hear you. But yeah, I really appreciate any uh, in terms of contacts of people that are already hosting gatherings, whether it's religious gatherings or otherwise. Um, please let us know and um, I didn't put my email on the slide, but uh, we'll send you an email after this meeting later, maybe tomorrow. We'll give you the flyers in English and Spanish. We have a Spanish flyer. Um, we don't have um, Vietnamese, uh, Chinese flyers at the moment because it's been a little challenging for this particular meeting to arrange interpretation, but we will have um, support for those other languages for our other meetings that are more local, so. Um, so I can also include my email and and you can, you can respond to me with uh, whether it's contacts or organizations that we should be in touch with um, to to try to reach out and see if there's um, you know, interest in maybe um, having a discussion in the next, uh, let's say, three months or so.
Adam, we can send out a copy of this PowerPoint to the commission. Um, links and they can have your contact information that way as well.
Thanks.
And and uh, I can also, um, well, it depend on how long are your flyer look like. Um, and it's also um, in Word format. I can help translate if it's not too much, just because I'm I'm totally, I I'm just way too busy with work. But because this Sunday, uh, I have a huge uh, Vietnamese community event uh, that I could uh, help uh, pass it out for you.
Okay, well, let me, um, maybe we can connect after the meeting. Um, it, I think that's a great opportunity. When would you need the flyer by in order to circulate that? By by Friday, basically, or?
For for.
Have it translated, um.
If it's already translated, then you have until Friday. If you need translation, then tomorrow is the latest, right?
Okay.
So.
Let me check on that, because we might be able to, um, let me work on that. I I don't wanna ask you to do that work, um, although I I appreciate that, Commissioner. Um, I think getting, getting the flyer out to the community is huge. That would be a big, big favor for us, so um, let me work on and see what I can do to get it translated.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rangelan, and thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Again, opening up for any other commissioners would like to have their feedback?
What I'd like to mention that it's it's a really good idea, you know, that what the commissioner was saying, you know, how uh, you know, it'd be nice to let the community know, you know, especially like religious wise, you know? And it's just, it's very important, you know, and and it's true, you know, um, you know, so some people, you know, who are minority, I'm I'm minority also, I'm Mexican-American. You know, that there's people that, you know, are elderly or don't have access, you know, to like internet or anything like that. So I mean, like, I think, you know, if we give him more information, li- like sort of in person, it would help them out a lot more, but was everything going on? Was the new spike going on? Because of Delta var- variant? I mean, I understand that, you know, a lot of things can't be done like they used to be done, which makes it a little bit challenging, but I mean, I think, you know, if if we, you know, let let folks know on social media, you know, and flyers also, and and our local churches, you know? If we let them know about, you know, about about affordable housing, I think it's gonna help them out a lot, definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I think with the time, let's move on to la- item number ten, city legend reports. So we'll start with item number eight, council member, council member Chua, do you have any updates to share?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Gandy. Hello, everyone, and I would like to, good presentation, by the way, Adam. So can you please make sure that I get the presentation slides and all the flyers and everything you you're giving away?
Okay.
Thank you. Um, uh, I I would like to welcome and thank the two commissioners, the new two commissioners, Commissioner Rodriguez and Commissioner Peralta. For in advance, I'm thanking you for your service and also the interest in serving this community. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you, council member. Thank you. I appreciate it. Very kind of you. So I feel very, I feel very honored to to be, you know, part of the the commission, definitely.
Hmm, great. We we appreciate you as well. So I always try to make my portion less than ten minutes, so here goes. So, so I was looking at your charter and online and I looked and I go, these are yours, at least five charters. It, number one is C D B G. Number one, number two is Spring Cleaning Day. Number three is the National Night Out. And four is, the fourth one is the promote affordable housing and building and safety and health. And the other one, the last one is Neighborhood Beautification Awards. So on the C D B G, Robert did an excellent job. The council approved the C D B G grants of over one point two million dollars, right, Robert? And it was approved in June. Congratulations. I know that's a lot of work. And thank you for your hard work on that one. And the Spring Cleaning One, and I look at this as this commission participating in the National Cleanup Day, which is going to be September eighteen. So that might be part of your task to how you get involved on that day. The National Night Out, obviously, that was done last night, so you're done with that one. And promote affordable housing and building and safety and health. I'm looking at this commission to be part of the A D U workshop somehow, which is planned on October, yeah, wintertime. So that's another maybe item that you're going to discuss in the future, uh, next month. And for the Neighborhood Beautification Award. And that's something to be discussed because we're postponing that for next year, right? So that's it. I mean, you guys are almost there and it's only halfway through. So we need to come up for more work for you guys, so. So I know you guys can do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, City Council.
So for for tomorrow is, because of the National Night Out, we moved the council meeting tomorrow night, I mean, tomorrow afternoon. So tomorrow we'll be discussing and and to adopt an urgency ordinance to address the water shortage. So so staff will be presenting that one. And also, we will get feedback from staff on the feed, feedback from the residents on the community logo. I'm sure most of you if uh, voted or did the survey already and voted your favorite logo, so we will hear about that tomorrow. Another big one tomorrow is we're going to to do the draft for the ARPA investment plan. As you know, we got sixteen point seven million and we got already the half of it, eight million, eight point three million. So we will be discussing how to allocate those funds. And I will give a, I will update on our next meeting. And also tomorrow, that's uh, exciting. It's gonna be our first live council meeting. So we, we are no longer going on Zoom. We're going live at the dais. So I did my training yesterday, the I T, I T team trained me, so let's cross our fingers and see how it goes tomorrow. So that's exciting. And I also asked Robert to show you a video that I created. If you haven't, uh, haven't participated in the, in our uh, dumpster day and also the monthly park cleanup, this will give you a little bit of uh, information on how it's done. Are we ready, Robert?
Let me check in with my I T team. Uh, Fang, do we have the video ready? Fang, are you there? All right, let me see if I can.
No, hi, Robert, I'm here. I just, I didn't get it, and I.
Okay, give me one second.
This video is actually the dumpster, for some reason, the dumpster day and the cleanup of the park happened on one Saturday. So I got excited and I I video it. So the first one is at Sankar, the dumpster day, where residents can can sign up to dump their whatever they want to, like mattresses, refrigerator, washer dryer and any big items. And then the second one is the cleanup, the park, the monthly cleanup. So that happened at Starlight on Abbott. Uh, so so that's kind of exciting. And the police officers were there. There, there were the ones who volunteered to clean up the park that day. So I'm looking at you, you guys, I have five commissions, so I was gonna go as, hmm, maybe I can get each commission that I'm liaison with to sponsor one Saturday one cleanup month. Here goes. So I'm challenging this commission to sponsor a month. So as part of your charter, because this is go- going to be a permanent thing. So if you can say like, we, uh, C A C commission is sponsoring the month of September, that will be yours. So that's a challenge. Thank you all and see you next time.
Sure, thank Commissioner, uh, Councilmember Chua. So I'll just add a point on that. In cleanup, we usually do it either in month of March or in the month of April uh, with the support of Milpitas Care. Uh, and I think we haven't been able to do it for past two years with the ongoing pandemic. But usually those are two months, either we basically organize the event in support with the Milpitas Care and we choose either a park or a mobile home community uh, like that.
Hmm, as part of the C A C commission as as you personally?
No, C A C commission, as part of the Spring Cleanup Day, the charter uh, we have on our thing.
Hmm.
And so Vice Chair, if I may just interject for a second, we will be bringing the uh, draft work plan to the C A C um, next month, so we can really have a a more robust conversation about all the work plan items at that time, when it's agendized.
Sure.
So we can be prepared to talk about that at that time. And I just also wanted to alert you that we we do have a hand raised, Commissioner Peralta.
Sure. Commissioner Peralta?
So I would just like to know everyone that, um, yes, I'll be doing Beauty, Beauty by Milpitas in September eleventh. Um, this was planned before um, I was appointed, so.
Oh, that's good to hear.
I wanted to mention also that I'm I'm interested in participating as well. Definitely, I mean, you can definitely count on me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, Robert, uh, this is Commissioner Batillo, um, Thelma here. Um, could you make sure that it's in our um, minutes what uh, activity that was discussed to to be present for some people to attend? Um, but the other thing is, um, I wanna ask also to, um, in our minutes, to put our um, what do you call that? We're members of different uh, groups, right? Um, the clean, clean, spring cleaning, um, the neighborhood night out and uh, the neighborhood beautification. And if, since we lost some of our commissioners and we have new ones, we need to populate those themes again.
Okay, yeah, we will, um, thank you, Commissioner. We'll definitely have that conversation next month when it's on the agenda and we can, we can talk through that a little bit more.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, thank you, um, Commissioner Batillo. So I think our, um, Robert, I think we are, we are talking about the subcommittee realignment, right? I think that's what Commissioner Batillo was talking about.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay.
We can.
Free, hand raised. Let me just check. Okay, I think let's move on to the item number ten B, city staff report.
No uh, city staff report, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, I'll make number eleven, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting if we don't have any other agenda items.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Okay, let's go for the votes. So I'll start.
I vote yes, Thelma.
Okay, that was fast. Thank you, Commissioner Thelma. Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Okay, the Commissioner Peralta?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Van?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Onika?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, I think we covered everyone. Did I miss anyone? And Commissioner Zhang, I know you motioned it, but again, just for the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, um, just wanted to say quickly up top, thank you very much to the Vice Chair. You ran a great meeting. So it's not always easy coming in with no uh, no past experience doing it week, month to month, so just wanted to say great job.
Sure, thank you, Robert. So with all your help, it's been my pleasure, so. Okay, thank you, everyone. Good night and talk to you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.